I am Tim Allen and we all know each other, I think, that are on this. I see Lindsay, Zeta, Paul Todd Hill from Public Radio, Chris Signoli is on. So we all have a vested interest in how this goes. So Tom and Chris, you guys are the ones who have been the main people trying to get this completed. I just talked to Chris a little bit, Tom, before you got on, but could you give an update on where we stand at this point?
Yeah, I think Chris probably has already informed you. We've got, we received from the owners what was basically an outline of the boundaries of the area they would be able to provide for us under this new lease. And as you're aware, counselor, under the old lease, we had space that basically comprised the entire northern portion of the lot, the rear portion. So from the building essentially all the way back to the boundary near where the rail tracks are. So we now have a reduced sized area, quite significantly reduced. And after we received the final site plan showing those boundaries, Director Signoli went through his, you know, kind of analysis to see if there was any workable site plan layout for operations, the DPW. And, you know, my understanding from his discussions with me is that it's something that, you know, we've tried a number of configurations on, but none of them seem to give us the radiuses for the equipment and machinery that we would need to not disrupt our operations in a pretty substantial fashion. So for that reason, it looks like, you know, at least at this stage, that there's, there's not a workable site plan that we can use for a new lease. And I think that means that we're, you know, facing consideration for eminent domain to preserve the space we need for for the operations that are essential for DPW. So that's, that is the latest update. I know that I've been in some communication with attorneys for the ownership today, just explaining sort of the results of our analysis. And, you know, inquiring, maybe if their engineers had, had been able to come up with something that was, you know, workable, but at this stage, you know, we don't have any confirmation that, that that is true. So I think we can, you know, kind of proceed with the understanding that we've really tried our best to make this, this new lease agreement something that would work. But it really doesn't look like there's a workable site plan, a layout for DPW. And in that case, we're really forced to be moving forward in an eminent domain posture. And, you know, there's certainly plenty that goes with that. So that's an update as far as the lease negotiations go.
So, okay, thank you. Before I ask Chris, I just want to ask just a general question about this whole situation. The fact of moving forward in eminent domain, and this isn't, this is a kind of a general question. When you get to this point with any property, let's say it was a different property, whatever, there must be notification, you know, implications of doing this to the other party. There must be notification requirements. There must be procedural things that have to get done in order to make sure they know the series. So are we all, how are we on that sort of stuff?
Yeah, counselor, I think we talked a little bit about this last time. There's a procedure for eminent domain that's described in chapter 79 that basically says that, you know, the process has to take place where the city gets evaluation, standard, you know, appraisals and review appraisals are typically what you would see for that. Once you have, you know, what you believe is the correct fair market value, you go to the proper legislative body, in this case, the city council, to get approval to do that. As far as, you know, requirements for notification, that basically comes in when the, the body is advertising that it's considering this action. So all of the subcommittees' actions and the actions of the, the main body are all, you know, publicly advertised to all parties. So there's, it's not like a special permit process where there's a specific mailing that goes out to a party. You know, in this case, the party is very well aware that the city is, has been considering eminent domain. In fact, you know, this goes back to at least March of this year. And I believe even further than that, just during discussions, but you know, on the record, just from written communications, you know, this subject was, was being discussed amongst the owner and the city back in March. So there's, there's really no possibility that they're not aware of it at this point. Their legal counsel, who I'm in direct communication with pretty regularly, is bringing it up. And we regularly have had discussions on that subject. So it is not a question of providing notice to a party at this point. It's a question of the council or kind of evaluating whether the eminent domain need is, is there? And then whether, you know, the just compensation makes sense based on the data we have. And then, you know, that's, that's really where we're at. So 30 days, you know, if the council approves the order, then 30 days after that, we'll have to record it at the registry and obviously provide notice to the, to the other side, the actions being taken. And at that point, there's a period of time where we have to render payment. I believe that's 60 days. So we do have timelines that are kind of prescribed there, but as far as like advanced notice goes and, and the property owners being aware of what's going on, that has all been, you know, we've, we've had that conversation directly. So they're, they've been given actual notice and they're, they're certainly aware.
And the other, the other item that I wanted to add to that, Tom, was back in March, April, we knew we were, whether we were going to do eminent domain or not, we wanted to do the appraisal process. So the owners were notified at that time because we needed access to the property. We needed access to their building. We needed access to a lot of things to be able to do a fair market analysis. And as we've been telling them all along, and as Attorney Moore mentioned, you know, they've been in the loop on this whole thing all the way along. And as we mentioned last week, we thought we had a plan that was close and then it basically blew up because of their tenant that's out there now. So we, we're, you know, the plan right now is that we are moving, moving forward on Monday evening.
And what are the, what are the implications to, I'm sorry, was it Trap Rock? Was that their name, Chris?
Top Rock. Or whoever it is today, right, Tom?
Yeah, I think their LLC is, it's, the owner of the property is Tapley 90 LLC. I believe it's owned by the same principles of Top Rock. So for all intents, we just call them the owners. It's probably best. You know, that's the easiest way to do it. So the owner of the property with implications for them are that they'll lose the portion of the property that we are deeming as what's being taken. So as a part of the property, again, not the whole parcel, but the northern portion of the parcel. That's the part that they will no longer have rights to use or own, and the part that we would be responsible for compensating them for. That being said, there are a number of factors that go into, you know, the city's potential exposure during eminent domain. And Chris, you know, correctly brought up that there is a tenant that has been put into the property. You know, since the time we started negotiations, they've done some work on the building, the little office space, I believe, and, and on some of the property area, and they've entered into what is, appears to be a long-term lease for the property. And, you know, my understanding of that situation is that I believe it was in November of 2022, the owners and a tenant entered into a lease agreement. And that agreement is active right now. It is a, certainly a point of contestation from the ownership as to the value of the property. As the council is well aware, you know, values established in a number of ways. And, you know, one of them is sort of an income derived method for, for, you know, establishing the value of a property. And, you know, my understanding from discussions with legal counsel for the owners is that you know, they are certainly valuing the property much higher than the valuation in our appraisal. And they're doing that, they're doing that based on the existence of the long-term lease. And I believe that the revenue that would be produced from that. So when, I think Monday night, when the council looks to do consideration on the eminent domain, it might be a good decision to have part of that take place in an executive session. Because I do think that there is a very real and imminent threat of litigation here as far as the damage amount goes. And it's certainly something I know we've discussed before, but I think to get into real detail about, you know, the, the level of exposure and sort of the city's kind of strategy here, it might, might be advisable to do that in an executive session. So I'll leave sort of the rest of that for, for that discussion then.
Right. And, and the only other item that I wanted to add on this land is this is land that we have been leasing, we have been using. It is not that we're taking somebody's land because we want to do something different. This is to keep our operations exactly the same way that they are in the way that we've been doing it for 25 plus years at our Tapley Street location ever since we moved up from Taylor Street, from that. So yeah, so it's nothing, yeah, and I, that's one of the things that I know I got to talk to the council about on Monday. This is not a, hey, we, you know, we decide we need some more land, let's go get it. This is in order to keep our operations. And going way, way, way back to the first time we ever talked to these people, the goal was is to come up with an agreement and, you know, their, their goalpost kept moving a little bit as to how we wanted to do it. And you know, as I mentioned last week, they also hit us with a notice last October, November of a non-renewal of a lease as well. So that kind of, you know, wrote up the urgency a little bit.
Yeah. And I think the director is right about that. And another, another piece of this that's important for background is that, you know, at the time that the new ownership entered into a lease agreement with a tenant, the leased property was, was under the lease of the city in the back. The northern portion was under the control and is part of the city's lease. So in November of 2022, it appears that the ownership of the property leased the entire premises to a tenant when it didn't have the ability to do that. And, you know, that's something that's certainly weighed heavily into the negotiations and the idea that instead of coming to the city as the new owners and saying, we'd like to renegotiate a lease and to give you essentially terms where you're paying us a little more than you were paying, maybe try to work in an escalation to give them more value on the lease that they were getting, but they would give us the leased premises that we had. And that would have been something that a deal would have been done immediately. And we would have been able to figure out a number that worked for everybody and we wouldn't even be worried about proceeding with eminent domain. But in this case, it appears the new ownership entered into a lease with a tenant for property that was already under lease to the city. And then tried to tell the city that we needed to shrink our footprint to a certain strange configuration, which just so happens to be able to match something that they quote need to lease to the tenant. So I'm not entirely sure how that, how that process played out. Again, I'm not involved in either of those negotiations. So I'm, I'm not the lawyer for them. I don't know. And I don't want to say that that's exactly what, what occurred, but it appears that that's, that's the way things went. So we got a notice of a non-intention to renew a lease because the negotiations were not fruitful and the layout that we have been given didn't work for us for various reasons. And again, this is due to the fact that we were being told that we needed to shrink our footprint on the site to a degree where we, we, we had to move a bunch of equipment and we had to, to configure the space in a completely different way just to try to make this work. And we've spent a year trying to do that already. And at this point, it certainly appears that, you know, the, the ownership is going to make an argument that the existence of this tenant creates this substantial value for the property that didn't previously exist. And again, that's something I think we should have a discussion about in executive session on Monday. And it's certainly something that is, is important to an analysis of eminent domain.
Okay, that's a good description. Before I open it to everybody else, just are they, do you feel that, like, I really thought that in this meeting, either last week or today, maybe I was naive or something, that I thought they're, they would be at the meeting and that we would actually have a conversation, a real conversation across the table with them so they understood the implications of their lack of cooperation with coming up with a lease that, that meets our needs. Have you, so that didn't happen. They weren't here last week. They're not here today. And was I naive? Was that something that we could have gotten to? Or have you guys had all the, all the interaction with them that you feel you need? Like, it makes me wonder.
Counselor, I think it just comes down to the idea that they've, they've given us their, their last, final, best bound, this is the boundary we can live with. This is what we have to have. And within those boundaries, it, it doesn't work for the city. So like our operations can't happen within that area. So, you know, having them at a subcommittee meeting, maybe that's a conversation that changes the boundaries. But if it doesn't change the boundary, then there's nothing else. We, we have no ability to accept their terms because it wouldn't work for our operations. And those are, it's just, it's a deal breaker for us. And I think they're, I think they're very, very well aware of that. So I don't, you know, I, I don't want to seem like, you know, we would not be able to get to an agreement at this point, but I don't see how we do if they're giving us this smaller area and we're saying, well, it doesn't work for us. You know, unless they change the size of the space or we suddenly don't do operations the way we've been doing them. Those are our options and.
No, no, Tom, I understand that. I fully trust you guys trying, I fully understand the, the lease that they present. It doesn't meet our needs. I, I get that. I just thought from a process standpoint, we would end up in a same meeting with them. And that, because I, I don't know, I've not done one of these before in 14 years or whatever. I, you know, I've not been in this situation before. So maybe I was naive. But I thought, you know, it makes me wonder, not whether you guys have told them or whatever, but the vulnerability we have with moving forward, do they fully understand that we're at the point we're at? That we're going to vote on this Monday night potentially?
And, and one of, they're aware of that.
Yeah, Councilor Allen, one of the things last week when we met with Seth, we told him about the meeting. We told him it was going to be there. We told him, you know, and so we gave him the info. And I, I, like you, I did fully expect that he would be, him or somebody at least would be there. Because at the council level on Monday, there's really no forum for them to make their, to make a pitch the way that the council is set up. So that's why I kind of assumed that.
You know, Counsel, Counselor Allen, it maybe makes sense then, if you wanted to try to have a discussion with them before we got to the full meeting, is there a way we can have a committee meeting done on Monday before the regular meeting, you know, and maybe have that done at three o'clock or something? Where we have, you know, a chance to sit down and you can have kind of a chance to ask questions to them about their understanding of what's going on here.
Oh, I mean, that seems to make sense to me, but you know, I.
I'm, yeah, I'm happy to, I'm happy to come in the afternoon and do that.
Are you coming to this, Ken?
I, I can. I gotta be at another one at two o'clock.
But this is about eminent domain for Monday night. And so I'm glad you're here because Ken Che has just walked in. So we're at the point where we had two meetings a week ago at this time and today. And the other party, you know, Chris and Tom have interacted with the other party and, and there'd been no movement really of them coming up with a site plan that meets our needs. But what I was wondering about is, is should we ask the other party to show up in one of these meetings? They didn't show up either time. So it makes me wonder if they really understand, are we doing everything we could do to facilitate them fully understanding? And fully trusting that you guys have told them, but.
My, my opinion, Counselor, we've gone over and above to work with them. And it's just been a challenge the whole time. And I know Tom's been frustrated and I have, but working back and forth with them, you know, even up to this point was, you know, I, I guess the best word I can use is constipated. It's like all of a sudden there's a flurry of activity, then we get nothing, then there's this flurry of activity. And we probably dealt with five or six different lawyers. We've probably dealt with four or five different people from management and dealt with lobbyists, local attorneys. And so everybody's been trying to broker a deal, but nobody's been able to give us a deal that we can live with.
No, that's well.
Yeah, I, I, well, Counselor, I, you know, I don't want to, as far as today's meeting, I don't, I had no understanding that, that anybody was going to appear for the ownership, you know, this was like a status update meeting. So I don't know if they were going to be here or not. I know the last time we did a subcommittee meeting, they were considering coming and they weren't sure to go or not. And, you know, I don't, I don't want to speak for what their plans are, but if you invite them to a committee meeting, I'm sure that they'll come to. So I don't, I don't doubt that they would want to sit down and try to tell the council not to move forward with eminent domain or to make their pitch that the value of the property is far in excess of what's being offered by, by our appraisal. You know, I have no doubt that they want to come and talk about that. So that's why I said perhaps, you know, like I said, early afternoon on, on Monday makes some sense.
You know, we don't have 48 hours until we get to, you know, to say three o'clock on Monday.
We got, we got 48 hours from today. No, we don't. The three o'clock today would be the deadline. We're Thursday.
Yeah, three o'clock.
Thursday to Friday, Friday to Monday.
It'd have to be at four or six.
You already have, I'm assuming Lindsay, you're going to have a 5:30?
Yeah, we have a 5:30 already.
Yeah.
With about 20 items, there's a, there's a million items.
Yeah, it's too, yeah, I think you're, you're better off doing it at four o'clock then, if you want to get, just do four to 4:30 and be done with it.
I, I, I feel better being in the council meeting Monday night as a chair of finance for somebody to say to me, well, did you ever meet with them yourself or something? I like to be able to say yes. And that's not that you guys haven't been great at it. It just, you know, we never had, we never, we haven't had that interaction. So I, I think your suggestion is a good one. But I'd like to open the floor to. Hello?
I'm sorry. Counselor Allen?
Yeah, yeah, I was just going to ask you, Zeta, you have comments?
Yeah, thank you. I did, I did have a few questions. I guess I'm, I guess, Chris, so are, is the city using that space that we're talking about right now?
Yes, we are. Let's see, hold on one second, Counselor. Can you see a plan that I just put up?
It's coming up, it looks like. Yeah, I can see it.
This big white roof building is our operations center now, 70 Tapley Street.
Right.
Next to that, the, the black building is the building that is next door to us. The area that we use is all of this in the back here. And that's the area that we lease. Right next to the building is a scale. We have equipment here. We have all of our sand, salt, stone, gravel piles back here. And even part of the area is in the area where we have our salt shed. So the area that we are talking about taking is 100% area that we are using now. We are not looking to take any additional area.
Okay. And so that means that during this entire process of trying to negotiate, the city has been actively using that space.
Absolutely. We've been using it for 25 years.
Okay, good. And then, so then I guess my next question was maybe related to what we were just talking about is, will they be at the city council meeting on Monday? And did we invite them to this meeting?
They will be at the meeting on Monday for certain. Yeah, they will absolutely be at the meeting on, on Monday. If we're proceeding to try to consider a vote, they will be there. They were, they had intended on being in the original meeting, but we ended up continuing it, if you remember, Counselor.
Mm-hmm.
So we, at the committee level, right. So they will be there for sure. Were they specifically invited to this meeting? We did say that it was occurring, although I did not, I left it up to them whether they wanted to come or not. I told them it was a status update. And I said, you know, we would certainly be having other meetings after this. So again, I don't want to say that they, they didn't come on purpose. I did not invite them myself.
Okay. So I guess, I think I like the idea of having a committee meeting inviting them specifically, whether they show up or not. That's on them, I guess. The one thing I know, I will not be available on Monday at 5:30. I have a thing at the Indian Orchard Elementary School. But I think I like the idea of asking, because you're right, Counselor Allen, I think the rest of our colleagues are going to ask whether we spoke to them directly.
It's a logical question. So Zeta, yeah, the 5:30 meeting has all the other finance committee stuff, grants and things like that.
Right.
I don't, I don't know if there's anything on there that's requiring a lot of discussion. I'm not sure.
I could do a three o'clock though.
So if you could do three or 3:30 or four or something.
I could do 3:30. I think, yeah, 3:30. I know I have to go to the open house at Indian Orchard Elementary at 4:30.
Okay. So I, I think we should be intentional about inviting them so they come, we have a, this same hard discussion with them, with you guys.
Yeah, Counselor, I'd be happy to go do that. I, I will talk directly to the council right after this and I will make sure that they understand they're being kind of asked to come and have a conversation. And I have no doubt that they'll go.
Okay. Yeah, Ken Che.
Yes. Tom, they're aware of the fact, I'm pretty sure that we could take this and may take it by eminent domain, aren't they?
Oh, yes, they're very aware. They've, they've been aware, like I was saying earlier, in writing, we, we had back and forth communications back in March about this. So they're definitely aware.
Get it, for the, for the council to get all worried that they're not aware of this issue, that it could be taken by eminent domain and rush meetings through that, they're aware of that fact, which is like a guillotine hanging over their head. So it's not like it's going to catch them by surprise. So I wouldn't get too worked up if they show up or don't show up because you know, that's the ultimate negotiating tool that we're using. So.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I don't know if that's, yeah, I'm sorry, Counselor. I, I don't know if that's what the concern is, but I think the other councils are going, are going to ask us if we spoke to them directly. I'm sure that they're aware that that is on the table and that's an option. And I think after the last proposal that they did that Director Signoli said is not good enough for the city, then I know that they know probably that this is the next step. But I think it just would be good, kind of like crossing all our i's and dawing i's by having them talk to us directly, maybe us asking them some questions and just making it clear that, you know, this is the last step.
They know that.
Well, they may know it, Ken, but I agree with Zeta that our job, my job, our counselor is to, is to give them one more chance to, to say to them in this meeting, they've not appeared in either of these committee meetings. Tom and, and Chris have been talking to them consistently and I totally trust that they've said it. I just feel that it's part of our job to invite.
Because I don't want them to come back and say, oh, nobody ever told us from the city council. We know that you did. Right? And it's in writing apparently, but in front of the city council. And I think all the counselors are going to ask the same question.
And, yeah, Ken, Ken, the counselor is Seth Stratten.
What's that?
The counselor is Seth Stratten.
Okay.
The attorney, the attorney.
The attorney, yeah.
Who is he representing?
He's representing them. He's representing the, the 90 Tapley.
Trap Rock.
Yeah, that's out of Frank Fitzgerald's office.
Yeah, we see, we see Seth a lot on a lot of different.
Yeah, we do.
And I've, we've been, you know, I've been dealing with Seth for years and we've had no issues. You know, so, you know, as a lot of people sometimes say, it's a personality thing. We work with Seth constantly on this. So, you know, we, we, Tom does it, I do. We have a great relationship with him professionally. And so, you know, it's, it's more of a client thing at this point.
So, so fine. So we invite, I think what I'm saying and what Zeta's agreeing with as the two counselors here is kind of in our domain Monday night, that that piece of information, we need to check that box, which is inviting Seth or him and whoever else to a meeting. All right, all right, thanks. Somewhere between three and 4:30 on Monday or three, why don't we set a time? What time would you like, Zeta? I'm available, so.
I think 3:30. If we could do 3:30, that would be perfect.
All right. So let's, let's talk to Susan right after this meeting and, and get a 3:30 meeting. And, you know, let's hope that they can make that. You know, Seth is certainly somebody we know. I'm surprised that he's not here, to be honest with you. But maybe, maybe he wasn't invited, but we can't, we can't leave anything to chance at this point. It's too important. And being intentional about inviting them, I think, is, is important. So.
Yeah, Counselor, I'd be happy to take that responsibility. I would, I will personally speak and make sure that they're aware that we're making a request to speak with them. Do we want to say 3:30 on, on?
Yeah, yeah, 3:30, 3:30 Mondays, September 18.
And I'll provide, what I'll do is, when I get the Zoom link that day, I'll also send it to, to their lawyer, to Mr. Stratten. And he can send it to any clients that are out of, out of town, because I know they operate in New York. So they may not be able to come themselves. But at least we'll have the ability for them to do use the Zoom link.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, I'll take care of that.
All right, great. Thank you. Zeta, do you have any other, and I'm not about to close the meeting. I just think it's good we got to that point. Counselor Govan, any other? I just think it's good we got to that point. Uh, Counselor Govan, any other questions you want to ask? I'm gonna go around, around the table here, so.
No, no, I think that, that's all I wanted to know, it was whether the city has been using the property all along and apparently they have. Um, and it, to me honestly, um, right now, it just doesn't sound very reasonable that they're being very reasonable. As, especially because we have been using the property, we've been paying for it. And now I think, um, Director Signoli said that, or, um, Attorney Moore said that, um. They rented the property out and now they want, you know, to, I guess, uh. Use that to say that they can't negotiate or something like that. But thank you, thank you so much.
Yep, thank you, um. Tom, we've heard from you consistently in this meeting. Lindsay, do you have any concerns from a finance point of view or from any point of view?
I do not. Look it up to these guys.
You got the money, Lindsay?
Uh, I have the money set aside. Yes, I do.
Okay, what kind of money are we talking about here?
We have four hundred and fifty thousand set aside.
And that is specifically. Specifically for.
I'm on Zoom, just don't know it. Uh, uh, counselor, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Uh, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars is the, the value that we're. Uh, using for just compensation for the partial taking we're doing. But as I said earlier, I think it's important that the, you know, the body have a discussion in executive session about potential exposure well above and beyond that number. Based on the existence of the, of the valuation that the owners are going to be claiming. So I don't want to get into the details in an open meeting because I think, um, you know, but it's a certainly a consideration, but. The four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the partial taking to do an eminent domain taking, the, that money is available for appropriation. That is my understanding.
Okay, great, thank you, um. Anybody else on here that wants to speak on this, uh? I'm not seeing anybody else besides Paul Toddell who's here, uh, from a media point of view, um. Is there, uh, Chris, have you spoken with everything you wanted to let us know?
Yeah, absolut- absolutely. Uh, I think all the information that we need has gotten out and we'll be ready for Monday for both meetings.
Okay, and, um, Tom, any concluding comments by you or anything?
No, no, I just, um, you know, I certainly agree that it's always the last resort to go this way. Um, I think that, uh, these. Owners and developers are certainly experienced and are, are aware of kind of. What property they have and what the risks are. So, um, you know, we always want to be fair and I think we've been as fair as we possibly could. Um, and I think having the meeting on Monday with them is, is another step towards being as fair as we possibly can. So I'm in favor of it. I'll certainly be there.
Yeah, thank you. And, uh, thanks, you, you set up, uh, work, workout with Susan and the council office, the details, but. Yeah, please invite, uh, Seth. I'm thrown off a little bit by the fact that Seth is often in a role. Where he fixes things that are broken. And he's the lawyer who comes in, he comes in and helps out a situation that isn't going quite well. I, I know him more in that role and that's not.
Well, I think that, I think that to be fair, counselor, that's, that's the role I think he was brought in, as Chris very rightly said, as. One, I think the fourth attorney we've, we've been kind of trying to work with. He, he came in in that posture for certain. So that is, it should be said for the record that, you know. He has certainly been trying to get, um, some kind of movement in the right direction to get us to a mutual agreement. I just don't, sometimes it's not possible and, you know. Uh, nobody's, nobody's fault in that category. It just, just is the way it is.
Yeah, okay, fair enough. Uh, I'm ready to close out the meeting unless somebody has anything else they want to say. We'll just aim to meet again on Monday afternoon at three-thirty with. With all of us plus, uh, Seth.
Yeah.
And, um, whoever else.
Other than I'm good.
Yeah, I'm good. I just want to re- yeah, I want to reiterate that I believe it, from what I've, I've been hearing is that the city has been very. Um, reasonable in trying to come up with a viable solution for all parties and it just sounds like the other party is not willing. So. Um, thank you guys for the hard work that you've done this past year regarding this. So I look forward to the meeting on Monday and thank you, Counselor Allen.
I agree, I agree with what Counselor Govan said, you know, good effort. I know, Chris, you got the call on. Your vacation or something that we weren't gonna, that we were gonna try to continue to work this out. Um, so thanks to your patience with it. I know you're frustrated with it. But we gotta just check things out and make sure that we've, uh, and not just from your standpoint, but from our standpoint. The council that we've, you know, we have business to transact as well and. And, um, I just want to make sure we can stand there with our colleagues and say, we've, we've, you know, vetted everything you guys have done. And, and we've met with Seth directly or whatever. And that gives us a more complete picture and I can speak. Uh, clearly to them, say we've done everything we could think of doing. So. Okay.
I'm ready for Monday.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
Have a good one.
Counselor.
Bye.
Very much.
Thanks for all your efforts. Appreciate it. Take care, bye.